Hi.
This meeting is being recorded.
I see all of our members are present, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Skies out there look pretty threatening. Let's hope it doesn't turn into any serious. Especially for our fire staff and highway crew. Members present, we have the full board in attendance here from public. Oh, I've been asked, we noticed we have several people, I've got four at least, that have joined us that are only showing phone numbers. We can certainly leave it that way, but just as a reminder, if you're going to partake in the meeting, that is to speak or comment on any of the agenda or speak under public, you'll have to identify yourself and please give your address. Okay, I'll open the floor. Any comments from the public or questions?
I want. Um, well, my name is Holly Hensel and my address is forty-nine Trumpco Lane apartment one oh seven in Ashford. And I submitted a letter to the board for this meeting to speak about item seven E, the American Rescue Plan. Is this the only time we have a chance to speak? I'm not familiar with your procedure here.
Hi, and good evening to you. We did receive your letter. It is part of our package. And our ARPA funding is on the agenda and we will briefly be meeting that. We will be taking brief conversations because our intention in the very near future is to call a public hearing on that and discuss in depth a number of the issues that people have been brought up. But you will be, and I'll make sure we call on you, Holly, given an opportunity to make brief comments.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Yes, I myself, my name is Carol Olson. I live at forty-nine Trumpco Lane and my apartment number is two zero four. And I like to speak out about what Holly was just talking about.
Yes, as I mentioned to Holly, we have an item on our agenda under ARPA funding or potential ARPA funds and projects. And you'll be given an opportunity at that time to make comment regarding that.
Yeah, thank you so much for providing your name and your address. We appreciate that.
You're very welcome. And you will call out to us when we can speak.
Absolutely, for brief comments.
It makes it easier. It makes it easier on our recording secretary to have your name ahead of time. So that's great. Thanks.
You're very welcome.
Anybody else like to identify themselves or have comment?
Well, I could tell you, I guess I would do it too. I, my name is Stephanie Naff. I am a tenant over here at Pompey Hollow Senior Apartments, forty-nine Trumpco Lane apartment one oh nine. And, you know, I'm interested in funds for rent, you know, that we're having a problem with.
Okay, Stephanie, well, thank you very much. And we will take brief comments in that when we reach that point on the agenda. It won't be long, we'll be there.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much for selectmen's briefing. I will be brief. We continue to prepare our Memorial Day memoriam celebrations, and we encourage everybody to partake. It will be on Memorial Day on the thirtieth, and it will start at eleven o'clock. And we will be putting out a program and basically will be held at the Veterans Memorial Site there at Park. And then afterwards, the Babcock Band is going to do some numbers from the gazebo.
Bill, have, Bill, this is Catherine. Have we purchased flags for the telephone, the poles for the town?
It's all done and on premises.
Very good. Thank you.
And we're also talking with all the parties and as usual, I know Catherine, you kind of led it the last time. It's going to be very similar, but the same folks for the most part, the Boy Scouts and that are going to be participating. We're looking for a nice.
One of the things I did, one of the things we did last time was we made sure that all three flags walk the flag poles at the same time. They're supposed to go up in a snap up. And so we took two contingents of Boy Scouts and then our fire department were the three contingents that brought the flags up at the same time.
And I heard it was very nicely done.
Yes, and I'm hoping they'll continue to do that.
The other item, I'd just like to congratulate the Hungarian Club. They had a very nice function with their special Hungarian Day up a week ago, this past Saturday. Very well attended and really well done. I couldn't help but think some of the parallels with what's going on right now in the UK, Ukraine, and what the Hungarians put up with and were able to overcome back in nineteen fifty-six. And we're grateful that it turned out that way. We certainly pray for the, the, all of the residents of Ukraine that that comes to a quick end. Unfortunately, I've got to report to you that we had some vandalism at the firehouse up at Lake Chafee. Apparently, there was a vehicle driven into one of our doors up there, so much that we had to board off, move one of our trucks. There was also some other minor vandalism. It's been reported in the state police. And we'd ask if anybody happens to know, anybody that was involved in that, the police call the selectmen's office or the state police. Our Fourth of July or the weekend of Fourth of July preparations for celebration are in the making. And anybody that would like to join in on the preparation of that are certainly welcome. And we'll keep you informed how that's coming along.
Bill, I'll be glad to join in on preparations for that.
Very good. Should be a nice fun day. Knowlton Hall elevator contract, I believe we have it on the agenda, but I'll keep you posted. We, and when we get to that, I'll give you an update. But we continue to have some problems with the elevators early as today. Unfortunately, we found out it wasn't necessarily the elevator, but apparently it was an operator's problem. But, well, it's an ongoing thing that hopefully we'll be able to handle.
And could you elaborate on that? It was an operator's problem?
Um, the only thing that we can suspect that it was not shut off or put on, re-put on in the right way. And I understand that's not the first time that's happened there. Apparently, there's a sequence that they have to be done, Catherine. And if that's, one of the sequences is turned into the fire position for the fireman. And if that's not done properly, apparently it shuts down.
Did Otis tell us that?
Otis has mentioned that to us a couple of times. And luckily, before we called them, Joe was over there and we found the same issue today and got it going immediately.
It should probably be documented because I don't know that it's entirely cleared, everybody. So, thanks. Here comes the rain.
For Roger and Catherine, I'm going to have Chris give you a call probably tomorrow. But I propose I'd like to set a special Board of Selectmen's meeting, probably going into executive session sometime convenient to you both for this coming Friday. And what I'd like to do is discuss the upcoming three opening positions we have in town. And we're compiling information that we'll have for you for job descriptions and a plan for advertising those positions.
Very good.
We should have all that information. Anyway, Chris will be giving you a call probably tomorrow and maybe Wednesday morning. But if you could look at your schedules for Friday on what your availabilities are.
I'll make myself available anytime Friday.
Terrific. Very good. Okay, so much for that. Item five is acceptance of the minutes of our regular meeting of May second.
So moved, so moved.
Seconded. Any discussion or corrections or additions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Here in number, number six, hear from boards, commissions, committees, and departments. Anybody to be heard from? Going once, going twice, moving on. The Ashford Advisory School Building Committee, I did have a instance of talk with Jim Rupert earlier, well, actually, the end of last week. And my understanding is there's nothing to report at this, at this time. Item C under Old Business COVID Updates, I've been forwarding you, the selectmen right along our.
Did we, Bill, did we miss item A under Old Business?
Yes, we did. Excuse me. We can now actually discuss that at the same time, but item A is, nothing has changed other than me letting the employees, I'm including them in on the copies of our COVID updates to keep track of the numbers, but status quo is the same. And I understand that all of our sister towns in the area are holding that. But because of what I was about to say in item C, I think it's going to call, call for us to do. I know we're scrutinizing on a weekly basis, but because of the increase in numbers in that, I think we've got to, you know, do that might, and if we do get recommendations for changing or going back to masks or whatever, we certainly hope we don't, but I'll certainly keep you folks involved in the loop on it.
And the vast majority, the vast majority of the state is in red status.
That's correct. That's correct. I think there are two counties that aren't, but Wyndham County is in red status. I know I'm getting daily reports from the school and they're also showing increases, one, two, or three cases a day between students and staff up there. The good news, and I believe I mentioned to you last week, I've had a couple of discussions with Director of Eastern Highland is that although there's been a slight increase in hospitalizations, it is not growing with the rise, percentage of the rise in the actual positive cases. And apparently their term of stays are much shorter than they were experiencing last year.
But Eastern Highland, Eastern Highlands, he has recommended that all indoor, that people wear masks for all indoor activities.
He, I believe he's recommended that for, as a personal this year's decision on, on people's.
He was on the, I think it was on the report.
And, and I reminded all our staff have the same sign up on our front door recommending basically that. Street lighting, our two famous streetlights were working on, we continue to do that. I don't have an update on it for you. And for you ladies who are attending, this is the item E is discussion about the American Rescue Plan. And we've got, we continue to solicit recommendations for consideration of that, using funds for that plan. And hopefully Catherine and Roger, I'd like to schedule a public hearing to go along with our selectmen's meeting of next week, excuse me, in two weeks. And have an open discussion on that. What I, what I'd like to do is have some discussion as to, I know Catherine, your feeling was that we should probably have a separation between time, between a public hearing and, and the town meeting authorized expenditures that we may be recommending. Do you still feel that way, Catherine, or?
Well, I actually am a little concerned about the, the thing with two weeks. I thought that one of the things we could do to inform the public before they ever go into the public hearing was to put some information in the Ashford citizens. So it would have to go into the June citizen. And they won't have that. So coming into it, what you're going to have are a number of people who basically don't know what the results of the survey are. We're going to be explaining it. They're going to be hearing it for the first time. And they don't have any time to weigh any of it. So that's my concern.
Yeah, our, our intention, and Chris and I have been working on it, is to try to have something for the citizen. I know the deadline's the end of this week for that two meeting.
But if you're having the meeting before Ju-, before June, which is in two weeks, how are you going to do that?
Well, as I mentioned, we're trying to work out the mechanics of that.
Yeah.
We will be having our next selectmen's meeting on May thirty-first.
Which is a holiday.
The thirtieth is a holiday. Which is a Monday.
The next selectmen's meeting is June sixth.
I don't believe so. I believe our next selectmen's meeting is May thirty-first. Chris, am I right or wrong on that?
No, the next meeting is June sixth, exactly.
Our regular meetings are twice a month?
We usually meet the, the third and the fourth Monday of the month unless there's a holiday on the Monday, and then we meet on the day after that.
No, it's the first and third.
Yes, first and third.
Okay, you're right. Stand corrected. Let us.
So that does give the, so that does, logistically, it does give the opportunity to get the information into the citizen before the hearing. I would like it that at least the selectmen get to see what's going to be published in the citizen beforehand.
We will certainly do.
Which, which also infers, let's see, we're at May sixteenth, so we have to have that information together for what date? For the citizen?
Our town clerk has been out sick. She's returning tomorrow. And I understand she'd like documentation by this coming Friday.
Okay, are we able to do that?
We're working at it. I'm optimistic we're going to be able to get something in. And as we share everything, we'll certainly, if something's going in there, we'll share it with you and Roger before it's submitted on Friday.
Let me know if you need any help.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. So the two items that are new, and we've had thirty-four responses in total to the survey that we did. But the, the two items that have been submitted that are new to us, one, we received one and it's approximately for eleven thousand dollars from the fire department. And we've got it in writing and we'll certainly submit that to Catherine and Roger beforehand from the fire department for supplies and equipment for use on the ambulance of things that were directly related to COVID. Items that had to be replaced because of protocols between, because of the COVID.
I see, I see that that fits entirely in the reasons for us receiving the funding. So I have no objection to that.
I don't either, and I can't imagine anybody had one. The, the other one is, is a request from residents of the senior housing to supplement, I guess they've had a recent rent increase there. Jessica, I see you on here. You could just identify yourself and give us a broad look of, of as you see this.
Yep, yep. So my name is Jessica Miller. I'm the director at the Ashford Housing Authority. And, excuse me, we are requesting, we would like to submit a proposal to use some of the funds for rental subsidies for two years. The total is twenty-five thousand eighty dollars. And this is specific for a group of tenants right now that should be getting rental assistance but do not get it because the rental assistance program is closed. And that group of tenants, right now, they're all paying over the thirty percent limit of their monthly income. And, excuse me, the elderly rental assistance program, which, you know, we, we receive every year. Right now, it, it funds rent for ten, excuse me, twelve tenants. But those ten other tenants are not, cannot, you know, participate in that program because it is closed. So what's happening is every time we do a rent increase, we have more and more tenants who are going to be paying over the thirty percent. So long-term, we are looking at creating an affiliate of the Ashford Housing Authority where we will be raising funds directly specifically for rental subsidies to help cover that gap that we can't get from the Department of Housing anymore. Um, now we are in the process of creating this affiliate, so we're just in the beginning stages. And, you know, those covering the rental subsidies for two years would give us a very good cushion to provide some rent relief to these tenants while we are actively pursuing a long-term solution.
So I applaud you, Jessica, for, for, for the attempts and trying to subsidize your income. I was very disappointed. You and I have had a couple of conversations about this. That the, the ARPA plan didn't specifically sort of designate housing authorities because as, as, as your building and as your housing authority, as well as a number of them that I've spoken through throughout the state, are experiencing both operating expenses and their tenants hardship with funding right now. And I think it's a perfectly reasonable request on your part. Can I ask, I don't want Carol or Stephanie or Holly to think that I've forgotten about them. Ladies, would you like to add anything to what Stephanie has explained to us?
Jessica?
Not Stephanie, Jessica.
Yeah, I think Jessica, you know, summed it up really well. She's, she's got all the numbers.
I will be submitting additional supporting documentation to the board, and I can submit that by Friday just to give you a little extra information, some background information as well. I just, I did submit a letter this morning. It was brief, but just to give you a general sense of what, you know, why we're asking for this. But yeah, if you have any other questions, I can definitely answer those. You know, I mean, we, we are, we did raise the rent last year. We are, I, it's being voted on tomorrow night by the commission. I've asked for a pretty big increase this year, forty dollars, which is the most we've ever asked for in one, you know, in a single increase, but, you know, given the cost of everything, especially the heating fuel, you know, there's a lot of unknowns coming into the next fiscal year. And so it really is necessary that we do this. And again, raising the base rent is not a permanent solution. So we have also come up with other solutions to generate extra revenue that we need to adequately operate that building without having to continuously raise the rent on a yearly basis, which does make a really big impact on the tenants.
Yes.
So.
Any, any other comments? Catherine, did I see your hand go up earlier?
Yes.
I want to make sure that the ladies are done speaking.
Okay.
Um, yes, if I could speak, my name's Holly Hensel. I, I submitted the letter on behalf of the, the residents here. But what I did, and what prompted me to write this letter was in speaking to Congressman Joe Courtney's office, Julia McGrath, and she is in charge of grant funding and, and regulations, I believe, you know, according to Connecticut law. And, and she stated that this does fall under the American Rescue Plan, that, that, that this large increase and larger increase is actually a result of the whole COVID economy where everything has now increased in cost. But she reassured me, and perhaps that's something the town would like to research with that office, with Julia McGrath, that this would actually fall under the the American Rescue Plan.
I think it, I think it does as well. The, this is a one-time expense for two years. And Jessica, what's your confidence level in terms of using other means to generate more money to offset the expense?
So what we're doing, and this is being implemented in July, beginning this July, we are going to start stratifying our rent. And what that means is we're going to have three levels of rent. And so anybody on the waitlist or new applicants will have to qualify for their, those new higher levels of rent. And, um, so that's important, and that will generate a lot of extra income once we are fully stratified. That is a very long-term process, though. As you can imagine, we only have on average two units per year as a turnover. So again, that's long-term, but it's a step in the right direction. But in the meantime, we, that's why we really, and we have started creating this affiliate because I really want to provide rental subsidies on a permanent basis to anyone who needs it and is living at the Pompey Hollow Senior Housing. So we are doing several things to address long-term issues because, like I said, just raising the rent every year, every year is, every other year is not, is not a solution. But it's a Band-Aid that really, it doesn't work that well, and I don't even like to do it just because it does make such a big impact now. And, but it's all we have right now in our toolbox, so we have to use it. But yes, we're going to do the rent stratification, and I'll send some more information over to that, over to you as well for that, just so you have a good understanding of what that, what that means and what it entails.
Forty dollars is huge, especially in light of the increase in food costs, et cetera.
Yep.
It's, it's kind of a horror show when you go to the grocery store these days. So I can only imagine.
Okay, did I, did I give everybody opportunity that wanted to speak on this? Holly, Stephanie, Carol?
Yes, well, I'm Carol Olson, and actually what Jessica had said and Holly, and what Holly had said about Joe Courtney's office, if you had wanted to, to even call over there and speak to that lady because another town here in Connecticut has given funds to senior housing to help them during this time with COVID, with everything going on. So you could check out that other town that they did give funds out to.
We certainly will do that, Carol.
Thank you very much, because this is very.
I saw Joe, I saw Joe just last week, so this is definitely something we can talk about.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions or anything about the ARPA and our plan? Hearing none.
Hello.
Hello?
Hello, yeah, this is Sandra Labrecq. It's L-A-B-R-E-C-Q-U-E. I'm also over at Senior Housing apartment one eleven. Hi, and I just wanted to, you know, make it known that there are possibly more of us here than have spoken up already. And, and I appreciate that you already see that this is a part of what falls under that plan. And I appreciate your help with this.
Well, we appreciate your input and we'll, we'll keep you appraised. Like we said, what we're trying to put together is a public hearing on this. And you'll certainly be able to express you and your neighbors what your thoughts are on this, you know, before a vote comes out. I would find it very difficult to imagine anybody's going to oppose this. And I think the argument can be made that this is representative of the intention of what these funds were put forward for, so.
Thank you, Jessica, for your advocacy.
Yes, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to item F, discuss and or act on health insurance incentive. I have not had an opportunity to talk with the school administration on what they're doing, what their plan is. We do have a consensus that we're going to be staying with United. Unfortunately, the partnership program that the state uh was offering to us just did not turn out to be uh what it was originally proposed as. Uh I think the last figure I saw was a fourteen percent, fourteen and a half percent increase over what we're paying presently with United. And one of the things that troubled me the most, I believe I I mentioned it uh earlier, but we were originally told that we were going to be able to lock in a rate for three years if we signed a three-year deal. That turned out not to be accurate. They actually insist mandate a three-year commitment by the town with an uncapped possibility of increases. And I'm going to guess that that my fellow selectmen feel the same. And even add, what's worse than that is that if we were to opt out in the second or third year, we would be penalized by having to pay a penalty, a high percentage of whatever uh losses we had during the areas we were uh covered. So to me, and and I've expressed this in the Controller's Office, and and anybody else that'll listen, uh I just think it's unacceptable for us to do that in in uh um a manner that would be satisfied with I I I think we owe to the town as far as our fiscal responsibilities are. So we are going to stay with United. Um we've let the, our insurance broker know that. And uh United has also sharpened their pencil a bit, so uh. Anybody have any questions on that? Roger, Catherine?
My question is, Darlene Kish, is she, who, is she with United?
No, she is an independent broker that we switched to.
When did we switch?
Uh we talked about this a number of selectmen's meetings ago.
I'm just making sure that we switched basically this year.
Yes, yes.
I couldn't remember the name of the other person we had.
I don't remember off the top of my head. I know she had been.
It's okay.
You know, and there were, there were people here that were very pleased with her, but um I'm also very pleased with with Darlene, and she's very professional. And uh it's not to say that next year we can't switch again.
Right, I liked your write-off. Thank you.
I'll sit on that, Roger.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, um discuss leasing of municipality. Municipal-owned property for leasing or farming. And I'd just like to say, Art, I I know I hadn't been able uh to look at your last proposal, but I do appreciate the time you and the the committee put into to sending that on to us. And uh I'll open the floor to you if you'd like to make comment on on the diligence that you did in the research, uh or if anybody has any questions on that.
All I can, uh all I can say is that it's, it becomes a much uh deeper process than what I, than a simple uh writing of a uh a lease to a local farmer. There are state statutes involved that I wasn't aware of until we did some research. Uh and that's included in that document from uh Yukon Extension and American Farmland Trust. They go into the statutory requirements that are, they're fairly basic. Some of them protect farmers, the less, the lesser, the lessie um from any liens that are on the property already. Uh some require a process where you get approval of the contract through planning and zoning. Um and it's just a process matter. Uh and uh that's all outlined very, very uh very well outlined in the uh, in the document from American Farmland Trust. So I'd just like to add that the the const, the agricultural commission fully supports um the leasing of town lands for farmland. Uh it can be a win-win for everyone involved. It provides income, some income to the town from lands that may not be providing any tax, and it can help a uh beginning or struggling farmer uh get on their feet and keep moving. Um and there are some sample in the documents, I sent some sample uh RFPs. And uh we made some suggestions as to length of term. We'd like to see a minimum of five-year lease. It takes a farmer at least that long to bring soil up to where they want it to be. Um and if they're going to invest time and money, they need to know they've got a few consecutive seasons. Uh as far as Cattle Rock was concerned, we recommended that try to re-establish access to Route Forty-four versus through the small neighborhood of Giant Oak Lane, um if that's possible. Uh and uh there are a couple of other things. I don't have it right in front of me right now. So uh but uh we're happy to discuss any of it anytime, so.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I did read through the, I did read through the documents and your summary. I think you did a great job researching this, um which I think will be of great benefit to the town and to the farmers um uh that do actually ultimately use that land. So um I'm trying to see if there's anything in key that you missed here. Uh the best management practices um should be utilized at all times. Those are the ones from NRCS and the Yukon Extension, which is a good thing to make sure is in there. And uh explaining that five, the minimum, minimum lease of five years gives the lessia enough time to realize a return on their investment once they bring the soil up to what it needs to be. So what I'd like to do, Bill, if we can, is do you think that we can be in a position to make sure all the selectmen have read through everything here? And we um, we make a decision on this at our next meeting, June sixth?
Yeah. Do we have any input in terms of, and you know, we keep talking, talking about the remediation that's got to occur on the ground? Do we have?
They have something on the agenda about that tonight, right? Bill?
There, there is comment, there is something here regarding Cattle Rock.
All right, so.
And we're not talking, at this point in time, we're not talking about remediation of the farmlands, the farm parcels, if you will, mini parcels that were already being used. Those ones, if I understand correctly, are in good shape. It's uh, you know, any new ones that get decided upon, you'd be more concerned about the remediation.
Yeah.
And I thought it was very, very good that um that our ag commission took into account the impact on people living on Giant Oak Plain, uh that any traffic going in, um trucks or whatever for the farms, uh because that has been a problem in the past. So having that access from, what is it, Route Forty-four would be much better. It's a matter of making sure that we uh access can be uh created or whatever to get to some of these parcels.
Yeah, I, I looked at 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 what the art and and the committee put together as as a very general and very well-done education for us on process and 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 that sort of thing and usage. Um I don't look at it, and we can discuss this when we get to Cattle Rock specifically set for for Cattle Rock property.
Ah, good point.
I've got some apprehensions about making any commitment. After some of the discussions and research that's been called to our attention about insecticides and things like that in preparation of fields, but we can talk about that when we get to Cattle Rock. I, I just think that we need to be open-minded, look at perhaps other town properties that we have uh that would be available, and uh look to it as a way that we can help complement our local farmers as well as making proper use of town properties.
I like that, I like that idea, too.
I I'm just not convinced that this time, uh being that we've got several things handling, hanging regarding the Cattle Rock property, that we should be making any moves on that. But I'll elaborate, and we can elaborate a little more on that when we get to that.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say that um we're talking, there are some parcels there that have been regularly used for farming. So I don't see how those ones are what I would consider risky in terms of pesticides, et cetera, um and having been contaminated. They've been used for years, so um to grow, I believe, corn, and I don't know if there's anything else, but certainly corn. So, okay, so we're going to talk more about this when we get down to the Cattle Rock piece. But the Cattle Rock piece is nothing more than uh us submitting uh the request for monies for remediation, right?
Well, since we're talking about it anyway, I I have no problem. Yeah, it's it's item D, discussion regarding uh reapplying, but I thought it was kind of appropriate to talk about it at the same time. But I have no problem if you want to elaborate on this more, expressing my interest specific to the Cattle Rock property.
Yeah, Chris, can you um, can you share in terms of uh the number of areas that are already being farmed on Cattle Rock?
Twenty-one acres.
Twenty-one acres is?
There are three fields.
Good. Three fields and uh is it, is it?
A total of twenty-one acres.
Okay, and they're being, they've been farmed by three different farmers?
At least.
I mean, uh recently. So it's three different ones for each one? Okay.
That's what we're thinking, yep.
Okay. And uh Bill, uh I believe the request that was made from someone from out of town was for one of those plots?
Well, the the initial request that we had was from Tom Wells, who had been farming that with the permission of Cattle Rock for years, for several years, that we had nothing to do with. I was appro, uh Tom, Tom Wells approached me to continue what he was doing, and I said that that was something we'd have to bring before the board and have a discussion.
He approached me as well when I sat in your seat, so this has been going on for a while.
I beg your pardon?
He approached me as well when I was sitting in your seat. So this has been going on for a while. He's been kind of hanging out there.
Yeah, and he did the crop last year, apparently. And then I was approached by the the uh the farm from Hampton, who came in that also farms a number of other uh cornfields and that in town here. One of the owners of that farm happens to be the first selectman in Hampton, uh very reputable people. And they offered fifty dollars an acre or seventy-five dollars for the second year. Um and that's what I brought up to the board. And since then, I've, I've reconsidered my position on that and don't feel that we ought to have anybody going in there doing anything at this time until we we get to the process where the town gives us directions through our public hearings that we're going to be doing on exactly what our intentions are for that property. And even more important than that, finish this last leg. Um I mean, EPA has got a couple of million dollars invested in a remediation of that property. Granted, it's all on the Wellington side, or for the most part. We've got a huge investment in the town in that we have not received any uh revenue from that property for many, many years. And and the fact that, in my personal opinion, I won't support doing anything more, introducing any type of pesticides or doing anything there until we get a seen, a sign, clean bill of health that that property is clean from, in all aspects of it, in all areas of it. And I'm I'm just concerned introducing, introducing other pesticides and things, even though it may be done in the past without any supervision whatsoever. I mean, I didn't even know what farmers were farming in there. I'm not so sure uh Cattle Rock did until the last year. I'm just not comfortable in making any commitment on that property at this time.
So the pesticides you're referring to are the pesticides that are put down when you're growing corn. Is that correct?
Two applications, I believe, of the same pesticide. It's a general, Art, you could probably refer that much better than I can.
Yeah, and that's a standard practice in the state of Connecticut. Um Art, can you elaborate?
Well, that depends. Um there is a process, the a no-till process where uh a cover crop is seeded, and the corn is harvested off, and a cover crop is seeded down. Um and then in the spring, instead of plowing, it's uh, it's herbicided to knock that cover crop back, and then the corn is planted in it. And it's, it's actually a fairly good soil-saving practice because you're minimizing the plowing and the tillage and the erosion. Um but there is, there is herbicides applied. Um I will say that herbicides are expensive. So from a farmer's standpoint, they're applying the bare minimum just enough to get the job done. Um so, but I will also add that if that is a concern of the town and you would still like to lease it, it certainly could go into the RFP that uh herbicides or pesticides uh be minimized or restricted or even not allowed. So um, so there is some, there is some wiggle room. I certainly understand the concern um of trying to get that property cleaned up and done. Um so, but there, there's, there's room to move, especially on that property that's already been, been um worked for years and was worked up to last year. So as far as I know, there's been no problems with the crops that have come off of there. Um and I don't know if if Paul Varga knows any more than I do, but um but that's, so that's what I know.
Paul, can you speak to that?
Uh could I just, Roger, did you have any comment on this?
No, I I mean, like I said, I want to, I I have not seen the uh material that Art sent over, and I just want to take a look at all that.
Okay, okay. Paul, any comment? You're muted if you're trying.
Or I might have been called away.
He could be gone. All right, Catherine, any other comments?
Uh, thank you, Art, uh again. I uh, I support them using the land that is already considered to be fine for growing crops. Um if there's, if there's a concern about pesticides, I think that we can, we can deal with that. But uh what's going to happen is if, if in fact, we don't allow those areas to be used, then what's going to happen is they're going to completely grow over, and the, this, the reclamation of them for farming is going to be much more expensive for the farmer. Uh it's going to take longer for them to get it to the place that it needs to be. And I, I, it's, it's, to me, that's a loss. So um that's why I'm not in favor of not letting anyone use them until we get the entire Cattle Rock property cleaned up. It just seems um extreme. So that's my opinion. Yes, Art?
I'd just like to add one more thing. If, and I was speaking specifically about corn. Now, if you were to have someone turn that into hay, um they would seed it down this year to a hay crop, whatever mix of seed they use. And um they would maybe need to do some minimal tillage. Minimal or no herbicide would be used. They would just till and get the, get the crop uh seeded down. And um and then it would turn over to hay. So then it would just be a matter of maybe some lime and fertilizer and a hay crop every year. And it's going to take three, four, five years to get decent hay crop off of, from ground zero, from turning corn over to hay. So um, but that would, that would keep the land in production. It would minimize, if not totally zero out, the herbicide applications. And um so just consider that there's other crops that could go on there that would, would not cause the issues that corn does, especially uh not sweet corn, but um silage corn.
And it would help our farm, and it would help Ashford Farm.
Bill, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
All right, I was having some microphone issues. Sorry about that. Um I I actually wanted to point out what Catherine said is actually a hundred percent accurate. If you let it, you know, sit for even a couple of years, especially nowadays, some of the invasive species plants we have going on are horrendous to get rid of. Um so that's the first thing. And then back to what Art was saying about pesticides, that is true. I mean, normally in a hay situation, which is what I do, um we use minimal, but I do have to use an herbicide every once in a while. Um we have some pretty robust invasive species that occur now. Um most of the time, it's in places that are publicly accessed. So a place like Cattle Rock shouldn't be as big a problem. But I do have some leased land that has public access, and that causes a problem. But uh it's super expensive, so I try not to do it. Um but otherwise, yeah, I I think uh one of the reasons that in that lease, that package that Art sent, the commissioner talked a lot about different ideas and opportunities. Um but it does take time for the hay crop to yield anything that, to invest in. But having it sit for several years would not, I don't think would be a good idea either. You know, if if somebody wants, if if the town is willing to write a lease up for a a year just to to keep it going. It it's not my purview, but I don't, I don't think that's a problem if you if you have it done correctly. I mean, I have a several leases in town with different. Different property owners. Some of them are actually nonprofits. So, and I was, I I I was, you know, involved with what the the commission talked about. And we took a lot of that into consideration. I know Art did a lot of homework. So I hate to see it sit just because we're worried about something like that. And it doesn't take long, trust me, at all for the, I mean, there's some really, unfortunately. You know, I don't know where, why, how it happens, but some of the invasive stuff now that we're battling is pretty rugged stuff. So that's all, that's really it for me, but I just, I want to point out, I do think Catherine is correct. Don't let, don't let it sit very long.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, timing is always up in the air, but I'm. I'm not talking about anything long term. I'm I'm hoping we get approved for this next round of grants. Right. In the state and can go in there and start doing something this coming spring, perhaps. It looks like we'll we'll obviously miss this year again, but. Again, without having direction from the town or the Board of Selectmen and what our long-term goals are for that property. My my personal opinion, I'm gonna walk before I run on anything.
I don't blame it. I don't blame the town either. That's what I said, you know, short term, a year by year kind of thing. Um, I know that it it makes it tougher what the Ad Commission was talking about because we're looking at the farmer's side of it, but from a town side of it. You know, and and quite frankly, from the financial side of it, which is where I sit. You know, we've had no income and now even if we have the opportunity for just a little bit or break, not, we won't break even, but not a loss because. Again, Catherine's right. If it overgrows, it's going to take time and money. And there's a a good portion of that, that somebody did work for twenty or so acres to keep it clean, so.
Okay, any more discussion? Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the next item. Route eighty-nine encroachment permit. The paperwork has been filed. Um, this primarily is is addressing the uh. Speed signs that we intend on putting up at the school. The solar signs and DOT has called today. I don't know if Chris actually had a chance to get back to them to acknowledge receipt of our permit. I'm hoping we can arrange this week uh to go out and do a site visit with them. Get that and we'll move. Discuss speeding issues. Item H, discuss speeding issues on town roads. Uh, our highway department has started to put up the signs that we've secured. I've given the highway foreman direction to order more signs and identify the roads to us. That he feels are priority and then we'll we'll go over that. Uh, I think we've already discussed that before. Item J, further review of correspondence received from the Ashford Sexton, Jim Revitzky. I also spoke with with our highway foreman and asked him to have a meeting. With Jim Revitzky and go around to each of the cemeteries to identify the trees that are of concern to Jim. So that we can either uh have our highway crew attend to them, get permission from the property owners themselves. With the release of liability signed. Or have Jim, give Jim. Instructions to contract with a private vendor. I understand we have a sizable amount of money in the cemetery fund that could cover that if our highway crew is. Either too busy or unable to do that themselves. Next item is review of estimated costs associated with the CES. Conditions report. We are still, um, we had them submit, I believe we forwarded it to to the selectmen. Their estimates, ballpark estimates.
Yeah.
And we're talking in the millions. The biggest portion, I don't know if Jessica's still with us, but is in the housing uh building itself and. Obviously, we're not responsible for those costs, but anyway, uh however, we're proceeding with getting estimates. To do the split air systems in Norton Hall, both in the library and the main hall. I've got an appointment with a second vendor tomorrow to give us an end estimate and by the end of the week, a third.
Are you including the fire department? I know they're having problems with their split system.
I spoke with Paul. In fact, Friday on that.
Right.
And I suggested he go forward and get some costs on that.
Okay.
They're scheduled to come out the same day to visit us too, Roger.
Okay.
Is that, is that tomorrow?
Yes, tomorrow. What time are they coming to you? I can't, I got that's. Yes, it is tomorrow, actually. You're right. Good thing you said that.
Time flies. Item eight is new business. I believe I already discussed the Otis elevator. Uh, we do have a bid in. And it's from a firm that worked on that elevator for years. Uh, I understand that town called on them in their frustration with Otis. Uh, not too long ago, they came out. They had it up and running for several weeks, just with being there for a few hours. I guess the good news is they're uh. Uh, nine hundred dollars less a year than Otis was with a comparable contract. And we did some reference check on this firm. And it happens that the senior housing has been using them for over ten years. And they're very satisfied with them. Uh, they said they're responsive and do a very professional job, so I would assume by our next meeting, I'll have a contract. That I'll look for authorization assigned with them.
Chris, you've worked with them the most. On these elevator issues and for years. What's your take on this particular company? Their service?
My is. A very personable. And from what Jessica has told us and what Ralph found out when he talked to him a few years ago. The guy is very responsive. He doesn't, if there's a problem that he can't. Solve immediately, he lets you know. He doesn't disappear for months at a time. Jessica said they've been very lucky to have him.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, moving on. Item B, under new business discussion and action regarding the Ashford employee health benefits. I think we've already covered that. Item C, ratification of agreements applied by town council. Our town council with the town of Eastford regarding the use of our Ashford dog pound. We have been allowing them to use our pet, our our dog pound. I believe Chris said six or eight years.
No, it's more like ten or twelve.
Okay, um, there's been no issue. The only thing I understand is that they have been cited. By the Health Department that on their existing dog pound they have in Eastford actually had to close it down. So we thought it would be a good idea and you should have copies in your packages. Of a very brief, brief agreement, which includes cancelation, cancellation notice from either party. For them to use the facility. We were going to include an agreement for use of our van. That we've made available to them over the years and come to realize with our new dog, Warden, that. He does not feel he has a need for it, so that's the reason it's not in that agreement. So um I would ask for a motion to authorize me to sign this with the town of Eastford.
Uh, I so moved.
I'll second.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you very much. Chris and I are also trying to work on an article, to be honest with you, and a little varied lately and and I know. But but about the Kail Rock to give some background and what our intention is on bringing it before the town. For open discussion on it. And I would say we're gonna try to have that in by Friday, but be honest with you, we may have a full plate and have to put it off until our next edition. Another thing that I want to do on our next agenda, when I put on there, I've had some discussions with. Uh, Sherry Much. And it's been many years since we've looked at the uh guidelines for use and charges for the citizen. And my understanding is that there's a twenty-eight page limit. For advertising and articles in there that we have, or she has actually brought up to thirty-two pages on a rare occasion. But our printing costs and things are going up on that and I don't have any recommendations right now, but I would expect. By the time, in time I put on our next agenda. I'd like to work with her and our board and just review the guidelines that are existing.
Sounds good.
Okay. Uh, item E, discuss an act on the board's intention to jointly file with the town of Wellington. For a DCD remediation grant, any amount of three hundred thousand dollars. I believe we've discussed this, but I think it's probably good that we have a formal motion on the floor that's approved by the board and.
I'd like to, I'd like to make that formal motion.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
Yeah.
I, you know, I think it's healthy. We we've partnered with with. With Wellington through thick and thin for a number of years now, and I I think it'd be very foolish if we shied off of that now and. So anyway, I I totally support it also. Any more comment? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
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 Unanimous. Thank you. Item F, reappointment of Gary Brown to serve as a vol- on a voluntary basis for Ashford's. Connecticut Veterans Fund represent, uh representative. Representative for the American Legion uh Administered Soldiers, Sailors and Marine Fund. And I'm not going to cite the statutes, but you have them on your agenda.
Uh, I would be very proud, honored to make that motion.
I'll happily second it.
And 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 I get of those comments. I've sat here and 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 seen him in action and how dedicated he is. And uh we're lucky to have him do that. So any more discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, unanimous. Thank you, folks.
Uh, the other item, item G, we've already covered, haven't we?
We, I think we've, we've covered that in its entirety.
Yes.
Okay, item C, ratification of an agreement supplied by town council with the town of East. I'm sorry, we have a. I've got a double top copy here.
Go to H.
Roger, can I borrow your copy? My pages are mixed up here. All right, we're down to the item G, review request for.
No, that's the one that, that's the one we had before.
Oh, okay.
Already covered. The next one is item H.
Thank you. Item H, board and commission appointees, recreation commission, fill one vacancy. For one alternate seat, term to expire four, one, twenty-five. Chris, would you give us the name of the gentleman that uh? We decided to recommend?
His name is Dave Roston.
Dave has served previously on on the rec committee. Um, I've met with him. He's expressed an interest. He went to the last recreation commission. I was expecting to have a recommendation from the commission tonight and I did not receive it. But I don't see, he's he's also a former chairman of the recommission. Who was a very hard worker on the commission and I can't see any reason possible why we would not uh support his appointment as an alternate. Do I have a motion?
Do we have to wait for recommendation or no?
I, it it's up to the board's discretion. If if the board's more comfortable waiting till we get something in writing from them. We can do that. It's just, this thing has been dragging on so long.
I would prefer that we have their recommendation.
Okay, all right, well, we.
Just like every other board.
We will carry this uh on our next. Commission on Aging, uh, we do not have anybody at this time. All right, item J, tax refunds. Excuse me, item I, tax funds?
None.
None, that's good.
None.
Remarks for the good of the board or additions to our next agenda item, which it doesn't say there, but we mean, Catherine.
Well, you have remarks for the good of the board is J and then items for next board of selectman meeting is K.
Right.
Okay, so uh. I just wanted to confirm for items for next board of selectman meeting, we have the citizen. Uh, costs and uh reassess the charges. For advertising in the citizens. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then we have something about Kail Rock and I can't remember what it was.
We're all set?
What was the thing we had about Kail Rock for the next meeting?
Just. Yeah, we're gonna uh discuss the plans for the field usage for Kail Rock.
Okay.
Whether or not a one-year contract would be appropriate or. Mister Polletti's, seven Polletti's.
Yeah, I don't anticipate, just, I don't anticipate that we're gonna have all remediation done and. Good decision made on the use of the Kail Rock property for probably about two years. So, um, all right, thank you. That's just a comment.
All right, any other remarks with the board? Hearing none, I will take a motion for adjournment. All in favor?
And time is eight oh eight.
Thank you very much, folks. Have a good night.